Double click. Yeah. They're in sequence, yes, I'm sorry.
So this is it?
Nope, that's not it. Go back. I apologize.
Eastward MBT?
No, no, I'm sorry. Fourteen, this one right here.
Well, I'll just, if they're here, I'll find, I'll just look at the agenda and I'll find what I need.
Yeah, that's right there.
I just needed to get, I needed directions to get here. Now I'm here.
The roadmap.
I can deal with it. Thank you.
The difference is where the materials are. One more click, right? Regulatory product, project application.
Okay, it's 6:30. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. My name is Duncan Berry, I'm the chair. This meeting is being held in person. If you are interested in hearing or making yourself heard, we encourage you to scoot down to Town Hall immediately, although it is being available, posted in the usual login at the go-to-meeting format. Our recording notice is that anybody who wants to record this meeting here present has to inform the chair. Otherwise, we would request that you don't do that. Anybody? No? Okay. So I am calling this meeting now to order at 6:31 and would like to invite you to join me in saying, standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, thank you very much. It's nice to see you in full room this evening. We do have a couple of curveballs in our agenda this evening. A couple of applicants have requested for continuances, and so I'd like to take care of those first, if you don't mind. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue public hearing on case number PB 2024-20. John F. O'Connell Jr., manager of 73 Main Street LLC through his agent J. Thaddeus Eldridge, PLS of Southeast Southeast LLC, is requesting a site plan review and a special permit to add a second multi-dwelling family, excuse me, multifamily dwelling to the property along with utility upgrades and exterior accommodations. This application is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Harwich zoning bylaw, Section 325-55 and 325-51-Q. Properties located at 73 Route 28, MAP 10, Parcel W1 in the West Harwich Special District, WHSD, the Commercial Highway 1, CH1, and Residential High Density RH1 zoning districts. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue case number PB 2024-20 to our meeting on the 23rd?
On October 8th.
Excuse me, October 8th?
As requested by the applicant.
As requested by the applicant at a time later than?
6:30.
6:30 PM. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Take a motion?
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The second continuation is for the public meeting. Applicant has requested a continuation, an extension of time to act for case number 2020-20, excuse me, 2024-24, 99 Queen Anne Road. Approval not required. Owner Richard S. Welch authorized Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc. through their agent John Bologna. Tyga and Bond seek an endorsement of a two-lot A&R plan entitled Land Division Plan Project Mid-Cape Church Homes, situated in Harwich, Mass., dated April 4th, 2024, prepared by John McElway, number 33602, PLS Tyga and Bond pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 81P, and Section 400-9 of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located at 99 Queen Anne Road, MAP 57, Parcel H1. Parcel is in the residential low-density RL and industrial limited zoning districts. I'm seeking a motion to continue at the request of the applicant to a September 23rd, no earlier than 6:30.
Make a motion?
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, September 23rd. Very good. This brings us then to a item, an item in the public meeting section. Case number PB 2024-25, Zero Woodland. Approval not required. A&R owner Harwich Conservation Trust seeks endorsement of a two-lot approval-not-required plan entitled "Plan of Land in Harwich and Brewster, Mass., Squonums Path Prepared for the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust, Inc.," prepared by Outermost Land Surveyor, Inc., Donald T. Poole, PLS 32662, dated 8/25/24, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 81P, and Section 400-9 of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located at Zero Woodland, Harwich, Mass., MAP 89, Parcel G1. Parcel is located at the, in the residential rural estate RL zoning district. So, do we have a?
Yes, we have a recommendation to endorse the A&R as presented. The applicant did, the plans were reviewed in conformance of Town Harwich rules and regulations governing subdivision of land. And VHB did supply an informal review. The application for the A&R is in accordance with Sections 400-9 to meet the criteria for an endorsement of an A&R. The only comment that VHB had was to add a North Arrow to the mylar, which the applicant submitted this evening. It was, it's added to the packet. And, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to endorse the A&R as presented.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
And Michael Luck from the Harwich Conservation Trust is here this evening, in case if anyone had any questions of the applicant.
Thank you, Michael, for being here. Any questions? Any comments from the board? Any comments from the applicant? Okay, any comments from the public? Well, I would then suggest that we endorse as presented with the condition that a North Arrow be added to the mylar.
Which it was.
Which, oh, so that was, okay. Take care. Okay, good. So I think we ought to, I'd like to entertain that motion. Somebody wants to make it?
Make a motion to endorse A&R for case PB 2024-25.
Twenty-one?
No.
Twenty-five. Sorry, thank you.
So we have a motion to endorse. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any comments, questions? Hearing none? Put it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Latch.
Thank you all very much for your support. It's another example of a great partnership between the town and Harwich Conservation Trust to preserve land that protects the public water supply and wildlife habitat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very good. This takes us to public hearing, case number PB 2024-21. Owners Louis J. Seminera Jr. and J. Bruce McGregor, General Partner, JBM Family Limited Partnership, have authorized Eastward Company through its agent Susan Ledoux to seek an approval of an eight-lot definitive subdivision plan on two parcels of land. Application is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81K through GG in the Code of the Town of Harwich, Chapter 400, Article 2. The property is located at 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road. Assessors MAP 107, Parcels S2-1 and S2-2 in the residential rural RL zoning district and Zone 2 Drinking Water Resource Protection District, DWRPD. Good evening. How are you gentlemen doing this evening?
Good evening. I like your new digs.
Thank you. It's very kind of bureaucratic, but it is what it is.
So is Susan here?
Hello?
Hi, Susan.
I am. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Susan is going to make the presentation.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So if you can hear me, I'll begin. I'm going to just review the letter with the narrative to the board. I'll review that first. So the existing conditions, I think, I believe you basically covered this in the legal ad, but the existing conditions of the property consist of two undeveloped parcels. 1594 Orleans Road is a 4.71 acre lot with 362.78 feet of frontage on Route 39 or Orleans Road in East Harwich and is located on the west side of the road and north of the Huckleberry Path neighborhood. And 1598 Orleans Road is a 3.74 acre lot with 172.94 feet of frontage on Route 39 Orleans Road and abuts 1594 Orleans Road to the north. The subject property has varying topography and is heavily wooded. No wetlands appear to exist on this property, and it is located within the RL zone and the Zone 2 area. And the upland or total area of both lots together is 8.45 acres. Now, we saw you in August of 2023 in the planning board approved an eight-lot residential subdivision. It's a grid subdivision. Each lot has the required 40,000 square feet of lot area, 150 feet of frontage, and each lot meets the shape number factor. The cul-de-sac road was proposed to be 942 feet long, a 50-foot-wide road layout, 22 feet of paving width with a 1.5-foot berm on each side, a 4-foot-wide sidewalk on one side of the road, and we provided the required drainage for the subdivision. I'll turn it over to Justin Lammerow when I'm finished to go over all the details of the drainage for the subdivision. And all lots and houses should be served by town sewer and town water. The planning board, the Board of Health did approve this also in July 18th of 2023. We met with the board informally in May of this year after we found out that there was a land title claim to approximately 15,510 square feet of land at the western end of the subject property, so that needed to be subtracted from the subdivision. But we had reworked the subdivision. It is still eight building lots with the required 150 feet of frontage, the same lot area and frontage for each, I'm sorry, the shape number. And the road length actually is reduced to 900 feet long, and we have proposed a 40-foot-wide road layout width, and we still have the 22 feet of paving and all the other items that you had approved with the preliminary plan. So with the definitive plan, we are proposing the same elements as the draft plan discussed with the board in May and as the preliminary, just with the 40-foot-wide road layout. And an addition of two very small unbuildable lots, which are lots nine and 10, and they're shown on the definitive plan at the end of the cul-de-sac. These are not building lots and are noted as such on the plan. And with the requested waiver, the proposal of the 40-foot road wide-of-way width, we're requesting a waiver of the required 50-foot width as required for a minor roadway on the Planning Board Rules and regs, Appendix 2, Table 1. And the only changes to the plan from the preliminary plan proposal to the definitive plan proposal will be a shorter proposed cul-de-sac road and a 40-foot road wide-of-way width. The lot sizes and shapes have been reconfigured somewhat, but all building lots will continue to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw and other aspects of the subdivision will remain the same. And we feel that the planning board can approve the waiver request based on the following. The 40-foot wide right-of-way will allow for a travel path that provides safe and adequate access to the lots or parcels and intended uses. The proposed roadway length at 900 feet will remain less than the 1,200-foot maximum length for a cul-de-sac. The subdivision continues to be designed to be in keeping with the rural character of the surrounding area. The plan is well-designed and generally in keeping with the design principles set forth in the Planning Board's rules and regulations. And the plan proposes the required sidewalk for subdivision with this number of lots. And the Board of Health did meet and hold a hearing on the definitive plan, and it was approved on August 22nd, and we have submitted three road names for this subdivision. And I'm going to turn it over to Justin now to go over the stormwater drainage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Justin Lammerow from tree engineering. As Susan mentioned, we have eight lots. They're all connected to sewer. We're proposing an eight-inch sewer main, starting at the cul-de-sac with sewer manholes down to Route 39. We've allowed a little play in the, in the connection pipe to the town system in case that, that system is installed a little higher or lower, so we've accounted for that. Town, we're proposing connections to town water for all the properties, electric and gas, stormwater. So we've super-elevated the roadway to the south to collect in pour bays, which we propose at the low points along the road to collect sediment, trash, and debris before discharging to bioretention areas that are, that will be planted with perennials and native grasses that are drought-tolerant, low-mo. The one along the southern edge is more of a swale, and then we propose another bioretention area in the cul-de-sac. These bioretentions will then overflow to underground recharge chambers, which entirely the road will handle the 50-year storm. That's, that's what it's been sized for. In terms of road control, we're proposing a temporary construction entrance, stone construction entrance during earthwork operations, and then silt sock around the stormwater facilities to keep them nice and clean while construction's going on and along the outside of the property. So, that's about it.
Very good, thank you. Any further additions to the presentation?
I would say no, Duncan. You know, Susan and Justin have summed it up nicely. It's, it'll be very typical of our other subdivisions in East Harwich with basically the same general housing stock. I did read the letters that have been submitted, and, and I'm more than happy to discuss a rebuttal once we've heard from the abutters, or not the abutters, but the objectors.
Very good. Did we want to frame the, your, the report from the town at this point?
Sure.
Okay, great.
I'll do a brief overview of the staff report.
Can you put the mic closer?
Sure. Sorry. I'll do a brief overview for the staff report, and I think, Matt, is Steve Rhodes online yet?
I've got Stephen, I would love Steve Rhodes.
Okay. Stephen Rhodes was going, was, the town's consulting engineer was planning on being here to provide information relative to their report and their evaluation for the project. So if he's not here tonight, we can continue this until the next meeting, and I will make sure that Steve is present to answer any questions that the board members have.
Right.
Mr. Chair, this is case number PB 2024-21. Site, site plan rev, site plan review for a definitive plan for owners Louis Seminera and Bruce J. McGregor, represented by Susan Ledoux, Eastward Company, as the potential buyer for the property. This is located at 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road, Harwich, Massachusetts. MAP 07, Parcels S2-2, Dash 1 in S2-2. The zoning districts are the residential, residential rural estate zoning district as well as the Zone 2 Drinking Water Resource Protection District. The development, this is a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, in 81K Dash GG and the Code of the Town of Harwich, Chapter 400, Article 2. The proposal is for an eight-lot definitive subdivision plan with two, in addition to two unbuildable lots, so there'll be a total of 10. The lot area for 1594 Orleans Road is approximately 4.71 acres, and 1598 Orleans Road is approximately 3.74 acres of land. The total land area is 8.45 acres of land with 367, 875 square feet. The applicant proposes to subdivide two parcels totaling approximately 8.5 acres into 10 lots. Again, eight buildable, residential buildable lots and two unbuildable lots. And the proposal, each of the eight residential buildable lots meet the required 40,000-square-foot minimum lot size and the 150-foot of frontage. The two lots presented, the two lots at present are both in a densely wooded area and do not appear to contain any wetlands and are not located in a flood zone. The lots, again, are in MAP 107, Parcels S2-1 and S2-2 in the rural residential zoning districts and the Zone 2 zoning district. The application and the materials were submitted for the public hearing, and the public hearing was noticed in the Cape Cod Chronicle on August 15th as well as August 27th. Comments from town boards. Police, fire, conservation, and zoning did not have any comments or concerns for the proposal. The Board of Health did approve the definitive subdivision plan recently with no, with the condition of no more than 32 bedrooms. And the residential, residential units must be connected to town water and sewer, and there shall be no garbage disposals within the residential units. The building department did have some concerns regarding traffic safety relative to sightlines and highlighted that a curb cut would be required by the highway department, and the highway department did confirm that a permit would, would be required. The highway department also noted that perhaps the island within the cul-de-sac, they recommended maybe removing that for storm, for maintenance and particularly during the winter to, to make road repairs easier. They also had suggested that any new trees or street trees be set at at least 15 feet from the road, from the road's edge, rather. And in terms of project history, the planning board did approve a preliminary subdivision back as, as case number PB 2023-22 on August 8th, 2023. The preliminary subdivision plan was consistent with the applicable dimensions and design provisions as required by the Harwich Code, Section 400. The, the differences from the preliminary plan to the definitive plan include the shortening of the road from 942 feet to 900 feet as well as a waiver for a 50-foot, instead of a 50-foot right-of-way, which was approved, to a 40-foot width right-of-way. Staff would recommend approving of the waivers. The planning board conditions did also include the applicant obtain a stormwater permit for the definitive plan. The applicant shall list all legends and symbols on the definitive plan. The applicant should, shall stake out the subject property for the planning board and staff to review, and the applicant shall provide three names for the definitive plan, which the applicant has done in terms of the road names. And, again, the, the planning board did meet informally with the applicant, and they did make a request of some of the modification changes from the preliminary plan to the definitive plan. And, uh... So the town's consulting engineer did review the road drainage, utilities, stormwater, which was submitted by the applicant. A revised site plan will need to be submitted by the applicant to address several of the issues that VHB did raise, which is also in your packet tonight. And staff would recommend continuing the public hearing just so that it allows the applicant to respond to some of the issues raised by, by our, the town's consulting engineer, VHB. And it'll also afford the, the board to perhaps do a site visit of the property.
Great.
Mr. Chair, that's, that's summary of my report right now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's very comprehensive. So I think it looks like we've got a couple of moving pieces that still have to fall into place. Are you guys on board with what we're tracking here? Is Stephen Rhodes, has he shown up yet? I'm trying to look. He's not, okay. So we're, I, I think we're at a place where we should probably go for the continu, continuation so we can get, A, the revised site plan, get the waivers lined up for approval, and hear what the engineer has to say. I mean, I kind of think that's where we're, we're at, right?
Yes. I would say for public comments, we've received over 15 letters of public comment. We could go to the public and to listen to some testimony. There were recommendations from the letters primarily highlighting many of the environmental impacts, rural character impacts, as well as clearcutting and other community character impacts primarily. And, and also in your packet were the 15 letters. We have not yet uploaded those to the town website, but I will do that tomorrow. We just received them over the last three days.
Right.
So we are working on updating that information as it comes in.
Just as a general remark to all who are here and all who are listening, for the purposes of the proper functioning of the board, we can't receive letters the day of a hearing. We can't receive them the day before a hearing. We're supposed to, by law, receive them four days. We're supposed to be, if you want them to be considered, they have to be in the packets the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting. So, you know, that's just the way it is. So theoretically, you know, like, a lot of us were here early, but that's not the way this is supposed to work. It doesn't give anybody a fair advantage, especially like the applicant who's got all this material in, in advance, and then we're kind of like rushing to, to integrate the public feedback. There was one letter that I saw that was requested to be entered into the record.
Troy.
And was that the one? I'm trying to remember who.
From Pam and Peter Latimer.
The Latimer letter, okay. Let me get, I will, I will read that into the record. Then we will entertain questions from the board. Okay, so this is the letter, email from Pam and Peter Latimer dated today at 6:16 AM. Dear Board Member Christine Flynn, Christine is actually not a board member. She's the, the department head, Community Development Officer, so let's get that correct. Please add my request to the meeting record if it can be please read aloud at the meeting. I most likely will still be working when your meeting is occurring. My office is across the street from the proposed development. Latimer Chiropractic, 1599 Orleans Road, Harwich. Traffic is already crazy along this outward curve of a road, and people tend to speed here. I ask, how can this stretch of road be made more safe along with adding more traffic from this development? I would also, I would ask that town boards and regulations to consider the reason why most of us love living, visiting Cape Cod. We would want to nurture and sustain the place we live. Please let's ask Eastward to be sensitive to Harwich's small-town atmosphere and setting. Harwich is not an urbanized city suburb. Minimize clearcutting, leave some tree barriers at the street entrance. Oak trees are part of the life cycle to over 400 insect species that feed the birds. Please let's ask Eastward to be sensitive to the natural environment of the Cape. The reason we all live here, woodlands, ponds, and seashore. Cape Cod lawns, at least more native seed, need less irrigation, no fertilizers, no pesticides. Replant with native species, at least a consideration. Cedar, inkberry, holly, bear, I'm assuming bayberry, ground cover, et cetera. Please let's ask Eastward to be sensitive to Harwich, Harwich's culture. Why do the subdivisions eat stone entrance edifices? Are they moving to a castle? Let's ask Eastward to set the example of what Harwich will look like in 20, 50, 100 years. All these things are perfectly doable while still making money. Thank you, Pamela G. Latimer, DC. So, before I get to the public, I wanted to ask the board if there are any questions at this point for the applicants? Yes, here? Yes, Harry? This is a question, I was looking in the town code and I couldn't find it, but it looks like the cul-de-sac sits on the property line and I'm wondering, is there a setback requirement for, I guess it's a road, it's not a driveway? You probably know this better than I.
I'm sorry, Harry, but I don't understand your question. You're asking about a setback distance from the cul-de-sac to what?
Well, the cul-de-sac goes, sits on the property line. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I'm still not following what you're asking.
Here, I can, I'll, I'll show you. If you look at, yeah, if you look at the-
Sitting on the property line, the rear property line.
Cul-de-sac, the property line intersects with lot nine and ten.
So what, now that I see that, what's your question?
Question is, is there a setback requirement for what is essentially a road? If you're on the property line, anything else that can be built on someone else's-
Setback would be the same thing as a front setback versus a sideline setback or as a, a rear setback.
But I'm not, I'm not talking about the houses, I'm talking about that road.
Oh, no, there's no requirement, I mean, Justin is frankly, but the engineer surveyor, the divine, the subdivision is better able to answer the question than I am. However, there's no restriction about running the cul-de-sac right to that rear property.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to sit down only so we can get you on microphone and record it. Not, nothing other than, I want to make sure it's entered into the record with no ambiguity. Sorry, just. So- I, I just hadn't seen that in the code and I was wondering if it existed. If it doesn't, then that's- Okay, so that's a, that's my only question for Stephen, but maybe Justin can answer that or address it?
Yeah, there's no setback for roadway through a property line. It, it's, the right-of-ways of the roadways is connecting to the back property line. There's no setback requirement in the planning board of rules and rights.
I haven't seen any recommendation, I, I mean, any requirements for the setback. However, the road does need to be on the applicant's property. That's the requirement under Master General Law.
Okay, okay. And I just, I had like a, because I remember in August, we talked about the, the two non buildable lots, remember that were kind of like, fit in little triangular pieces? Why did we do that again? Is it because there was, was there, I can't even, I'm just trying to remember, right?
I think that can be answered by the applicant.
Yeah, I believe that those were created because there, there is farther land beyond this and we don't want to landlock anyone. So it's to provide access if, if, for future, is my understanding, for future layout, if that is necessary.
Okay, all right, well, it's a little bit of a technical mystery to me, but that's not, neither here nor there. If we went through the process, we went through the process and my memory's in that. Any other questions here? Well, let's open it up to the public and I entertain, just ask you to address the podium, address the board or, and/or applicant, state your name. Remember that the, I would like to encourage you to consider that we're here tonight to discuss a particular property and the legalities of the development of property. We're not here to discuss the aesthetics of the town or, you know, the, the flavor of, you know, a particular development aesthetic. And the reason we do that is, if you want, if you have those objections and you're objecting to the law and we can't change that here tonight, and I am entirely sympathetic with all sorts of variations in our, our, our code and our law, but we can't do that, we can't bring that to bear on an existing, existing property. So, you know, if, that's why I want to make sure that we stick to the business at hand this evening. Mr. Otten, thank you.
Yeah, hello, Patrick Otten. May I ask that these two gentlemen identify themselves? Their names were not given.
Yeah, please, introduce yourselves again.
I'm Doug Lovell.
Doug Lovell.
I represent the owners.
Okay.
I'm William Marsh, I'm president of Eastwood Companies.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the submission of communication to Christine, can you please state in the public notice, when it's published in the Chronicle, that all submissions need to proceed four days before the meeting?
This has been the case, I've been on the board for about ten years, this is the way it's been for ten years.
I'm not on the board, so as a public person, it'd be helpful for me to have that stated, four-day submission required before the meeting.
Where do we have it stated?
We've, we've gone through this about every twenty months or so, so it comes up again and then we say, please submit it, so, I don't know.
I will check and make sure that it's posted as a courtesy to the public. I'm happy to do that and make sure that all policies are updated and are easily available on the website.
Maybe just like a, a statement on the, the department's front page that if you wish to submit, please do so, because we don't receive packages, they aren't prepared ordinarily optimally the Thursday before.
I'm trying to make your job easier.
I know, I'm just saying that, so-
If I knew that it had to be there four days before, I would have done that. I didn't know, it didn't say that in the public notice in the paper. So, thank you.
Duly noted.
Okay. Good. I know Pamela, Pam Latimer specifically stated to be included as the record.
Right.
Can I please ask that what I submitted also be included?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Can I ask that all the letters be submitted?
Actually, all the letters will not only be, unless they're specifically requested to be entered into the record verbally, they're all entered into the written record automatically and they will be updated on the website tomorrow.
I understand.
They will be there.
So there's a difference between verbal on the record and written?
Yes.
Hard copy.
There is.
Gotcha.
And the thing, and the reason is, is that some people can't be present and if they're not gonna, if they can't be present, we're always, you know, and if they request that it gets written or read in, we will obviously-
I see, thank you.
Yeah, I know.
You're way ahead of me on that.
No, it's new to everybody, I get it.
Okay. I am just gonna, you know, I agree, I'm not here to change the law because law is not being written today to be changed. I am here to ask for sensitivity.
Right.
And, you know, this book, written nineteen forty-two, when I was, read it when I was in the, probably five or six years old, over sixty years ago, addressed us just that exact issue, you know? How do you lose your neighborhood? What happens? Virginia Lee Burton had a cul-de-cat award for this book, talking about development and the loss of place and, and, and character. So, you know, it's not a new issue and I just really wish to stress that Harwich is a rural committee, community, that this is being developed into a rural residential area. We need to keep that in mind, please. Harwich is a small town. It is not a urban suburban commercialized metropolitan setting, you know? We need to keep the houses in keeping with the houses that are here presently, okay? Harwich prides itself on its historic past. What will these developments look like one hundred years from now? Will they be tagged as historic areas? Maybe, maybe not. My big issue really, though, is that the subdivision plan replaces nature with eight acres of non-native turf grass, eight acres of irrigation, eight acres of fertilized management, eight acres of pesticide management, and all of nature replaced with non-native species, pretty foreign, non-native flowers planted in alternating sequence in a straight line against a fence. That isn't Harwich. We're here because of the woodlands, because of the ponds, and because of the seashore. These developments affect all of that. And my only comment really is just to ask for sensitivity on eastward's part. Their construction practices are not in keeping with Harwich's small-town rural character. Their construction practices date from the sixties of urban and suburban subdivision built up and around large cities. It does not belong in Harwich or the Cape. Eastward developments have a negative impact on all three of Cape's valuable resources, the woodlands, the ponds, and the seashore. So what am I asking for? Please minimize tree cutting. Please, Cape Cod lawns, no irrigation, no fertilizers, no pesticides. Replant, please, with only native species. And please, eliminate the stone edifice, entrance edifices, standard, simple street signs is all you need to identify your developments. Google Maps will take care of all the other problems of knowing where you are. So I appreciate your time and, and listening. And I agree, I wish there was some way to work around this in a legal sense, but I'm-
You know what? I'll, I'll tell you, there is. And, you know, I think that there are people that are completely or partially aligned with you and with, you know, plenty of other people in town on a whole range of opinions about other, but on this, there, there is some consensus. So I would encourage you, just like we did in, in, you know, one of the villages, get organized and if this is what you want to do, just, it's a multi-year process and it's hundreds of hours, but if this is what you want, instead of just requesting sensitivity, you know, you can request compliance. And so, and, you know, as far as it is now, there's a, there's a process, it's in place and it's, you know, it's hard to argue with that, the thing that's in place, I mean, because you want to be treated with the same respect, so. But duly noted, you know, and I, and I would also argue, and I'm sorry to be, you know, talking out of my hat here, but we had a letter from a fellow named Matthew Setfin, who had specific requests that were similar about leaving existing trees and, you know, so those are the kind of things that I think that we can request of the applicant, you know, and those are practical things. And so my thought is that this evening, if those are the kinds of things that we can discuss, I really would encourage any productive, you know, thoughtful ways of encouraging that, that aesthetic. That's the way we can move, you know, incrementally toward having a, you know, cooperative neighborly response. Thank you, Mr. Otten.
No, thank you as well, so, thank you, the board as well, and Christine, thank you.
Thank you. Please go right ahead and address, let us have your name and address and, or village, I should say, and-
Hi, I'm Susan Patterson, I live on Cottonwood Road and I drive by down one thirty-seven all the time. And I remember before East Wind developed what they call Elijah's Woods, there were woods there. And it was beautiful and it was a place where children from the adjoining school went with volunteers, many of whom were local parents, to ident, learn about the wildlife and the native plants and the ecology of that patch of, of woodlands. It was a patch of wilderness. Eastland Wind's development strategy, clearcut all the trees, built this huge, ugly asphalt path where there had been woods and cookie cutter buildings, mega homes, and planted a few squawny little trees, you know, and a fence against the, so that they wouldn't have to see the highway, and totally destroyed the character of that ecology and what the schoolchildren had access to. And many, some people in East Harwich, right in that community, moved away off Cape as a result because they, you know, they were so thickened. And whenever I drive by there, my heart breaks and I, I second, you know, it's beyond asking for sensitivity. When you, when you clearcut the trees, what you replant does not replace the, it's not about aesthetics. It's, it's about the sustaining power of nature for people on Cape Cod, many of whom live here precisely for that reason. And, and if, if fertilizers and pesticides are used to irrigate and, and keep in check these non-native plants, the result is that our groundwater and our freshwater ponds are further degraded. And all of these things, the, the impact goes beyond that little development. So you, you, you raise the possibility of doing more than, than requesting sensitivity and sort of mobilizing a larger response. I would be interested in hearing what our options are for that because I, you know, and I, I also heard one of the developing team or the building team refer to the fact that the, those little parcels that are unusable for building were leapt open there in order to leave the possibility of access for further development behind. This is precisely what is driving people out of this community, people who have been here a long time, not people who can afford these McMansions with no character that degrade our environment. And if, I would really be grateful for your input. What were you, what did you mean when you said there are options for trying to contest this kind of development or, or require certain modifications to the currently approved development?
All, all I was saying was that there's a process for changing the law, right, or the codes. And the process is pretty straightforward and it's, you know-
Most people don't, aren't aware of it, though.
I know, well, you, that's the thing, it's in each kind of circumstance where this, where people do alter the law, it's a kind of a unique tailored event for a particular issue. Like if you take a look at what was done up on, like, what was it, Pleasant Lake? There was a concern about that. So the, the exigencies for each particular issue are conditional on like what the sensitivities are at the time and what the law is for that particular event. So, you know, I know that people are interested in, you know, from a multiple points of view about, you know, zoning laws. So all I could say is get informed, figure it out, get your, you know, that's, that's the way these things happen. I mean, I, I don't have, there's no recipe book.
By then, East Wind will have destroyed so much more of Harwich and I'm, I don't-
If you look, take a look, take a page out of the people who are doing preservation, you know, historic preservation, I mean, it's, it's the same thing. Other towns have other things, but I would encourage you just to, to, to look into it and figure out, because you can't tell people who have invested in, you know, in their property and are following the guidelines that were set up for it, to, that it's, they can't do it without, you know, for, for, with, based on opinion. That's, that's the concern, the board represents the town.
It's not opinion, it's asking for sensitivity for residents who care about our natural environment.
And that's why we have the hearings and I think the sensitivity issue is if the applicant is, you know, believes that there is a leeway and, you know, neighborliness and, you know, welcome back and forth, that's what we would like to encourage, that's what we can encourage.
But that's all you can do is encourage it.
Well, we're not a law enforcement and we're not a law-making entity.
Okay, got it.
But I thank you for your input, Ms. Patterson, and I appreciate you being here this evening.
Could my testimony also be included in the record?
Well, it is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Please, step right up, as they say.
At least they're with the note to do.
Not to worry, not to worry. If you make it to the podium, you're halfway there.
I'm Pat Mulkey and I live on two Huckleberry Path, right on the corner of thirty-nine.
Okay.
I have no problem with the development because that's what it's zoned for, unfortunately. I have a problem with the blind corner that's, that's going to be on. There's numerous accidents.
Right.
And the traffic on Route thirty-nine, believe me, goes from anywhere sixty to seventy miles an hour. I'm afraid for anybody coming out of your development, quite truthfully.
Well, I think your concerns are addressed by the highway department and the, we, that's also within the remit of the engineer's report, so that's why we're going to continue this, we need to get more information, but duly noted.
Does, does the town limit the, the speed limit on, on thirty-nine? I don't, I don't ever see any signs and I see all the little flashing signs like on Queenian Road and, and other areas.
It's a state road, don't.
It's a state road, I'll answer that question.
As somebody who lives in twenty-eight- As somebody who lives on twenty-eight.
Forty-five.
I sympathize.
But these are, these are, these sixteen-wheelers with, you know, a full load.
Don't get me started.
They're not going to stop.
I have to wait fifty, fifty-five cars to get out of my driveway. So I'm sympathetic. The state.
Well, that's why I would, I wouldn't live off of one thirty-seven there because those people in the summer probably can't turn left out of their driveway.
Well, the concern is, the current concern was in here, in the town, um, yeah, the, the staff review, so duly noted. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, and, you know, just have a few officers sit at my corner. I could, I could pay one patrolman's pay for the year, for the tickets I could issue. But fly and buy and it really has nothing to do with the development. It just is my concern that there's going to be accidents there.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Barbara Kepin. I live on Pleasant Bay Court. And I've noticed that this is going to be happening on the curve of thirty-nine, which is not a good, um, area, as she just expressed. My concern is, we're supposed to be striving toward affordable housing in Harwich. And I don't see that happening. Over and over we get the McMansions. And it's nice to have people come to our town that have money and want to spend it. But we also have a lot of people that need to go to work every day. And just normal, regular people who live in little Cape Cod houses. So I know this is off topic a little bit, but in the future, could we build some affordable housing? That would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the board? Well, um, it looks as though, I appreciate, thank you for everybody who spoke this evening. I appreciate it. Thank you for the applicant for coming out tonight. I think we do have a situation where we need to continue it, this, um, the, the hearing. So I would like to entertain a motion to continue to, um, are we looking at the twenty-third?
Yes.
So twenty-third, no earlier than six thirty PM.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Uh, no, we continue.
Okay, okay.
Make a motion.
So we have a motion to continue to September twenty-third, no earlier than six thirty PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you on the twenty-third.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, Duncan.
Thank you.
And the rest of the board.
And I want to thank the public for coming out. I appreciate the input this evening. Duly noted. Thank you. And, uh, the sooner we get the, the letters, the better for all concerned. Thank you, Susan.
Thanks.
Thank you, Justin.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
That takes us to the last item. We have draft minutes for August sixth and twentieth.
Mr. Chair, if we could defer to the next meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I don't have any.
I haven't sent them out to the board for review.
Was there any further discussion about the comprehensive town planning update? Any news?
No, other than we are scheduled for the Housing Production Plan public hearing for October twenty-second, which the planning board will be hosting. So I have earmarked that.
October twenty-second?
October twenty-second, correct.
And I think that's our agenda for the evening. I, I was expecting, yes, I do have that.
Six thirty. So our next, our next meeting is the?
September twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Then October eighth, then the twenty-second, right?
Twenty-second.
Is there any other matters before, where anybody want to bring up? No, and then I entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you, Christine.